Okay, so we're starting with our next agency. This is going to be the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City. And whenever you're ready.
I'm sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to acknowledge Council President Z. Cohen, Sheriffwoman Danielle McCray.
Thank you, State's Attorney Bates. Can you do us a favor just for the record? Can you just state your first and last name and your agency? Thank you.
I understand. Good afternoon. I'm Ivan Bates, State's Attorney for Baltimore City. And I'd also like to say hello to all the other members of the City Council. Very glad to be here. Today, I'm joined by my executive team, including such members as my Chief of Staff, Angela Galliano, Deputy State's Attorney Catherine Flynn, who is not here but watching, Deputy State's Attorney Greg Solomon, Deputy State's Attorney Tom Donnelly, Chief of Human Resources and Finance Stuart Beckham, and Chief of Communications, Mr. James Bentley. I'd also have in the audience with us from the State's Attorney's Office, the Division Building Chiefs and Division Chiefs of State's Attorney's Office, Homicide, G- Gun Violence Enforcement, Special Victims, Evidence Review, Major Investigations, Victim and Witness, Economic Crimes, Misdemeanor Jury Trial, District Court, External Affairs, Police Integrity, Narcotics, Felony Conviction Integrity, Criminal Investigations, Post Conviction Litigation Training, Charging Juvenile, and Specialty Court Units. The State's Attorney's Office provides three major services to the people of Baltimore City. Service 115, the Prosecution of Criminals. Service 781, Administrative Services. And Service 786, Victim and Witness Services. Our 389 employees are organized in 26 separate divisions, as seen in our organizational chart. These divisions operate at our main office downtown, as well as the Circuit Court, District Courthouses, the Juvenile Justice Center, and remotely from central booking through their operations. The mission of our office is to pursue public safety through partnerships with elected officials like yourselves, law enforcers in the community. To continue to do that effectively, we have outlined the following goals for fiscal year 26. Number one, continue hiring to fill the 14 unfrozen ASA pins containing the mayor's fiscal year 2026 budget proposal to support our understaffed divisions with new and legacy hires. Number two, replace grant funds with general funds and obtain budget authority to create 10 permanent full-time paralegal positions to support our body-worn camera unit under the Evidence Review Division, which reviews footage required for discovery and case prep by allowing for greater officer transparency, resolving Fourth Amendment questions around police actions. Number three, enhance network infrastructure and our IT security system to harden threats from bad actors to continue to support multiple license renewal requirements, case management system support, and software applications. After being restructured in 2023, our Victim and Witness Division applies an all-inclusive focus on aiding and providing services to all parties in criminal cases, including the coordination and contact of police officers who are witnesses to ensure that all necessary partners or party, or partners are part of this case preparation, process, and the goal of decreasing the numbers of cases that are dismissed due to witness issues. This also includes a more collaborative approach to victim and witness. Thank you. Victim and Witness relocation of services citywide. Thanks to our recruiting efforts, our office has hired 110 new prosecutors, 30 law clerks, 25 body-worn camera staff members since July 2022. We have 12 ASA job offers, Assistant State's Attorney job offers, that have been accepted with pending start dates. We have 10 Assistant State's Attorney pins remaining based on the 14 unfrozen pins. With 183 prosecutors and 206 support staff, we have a total of 389 employees at the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, which has eased the caseload burden on prosecutors and provided them with the necessary support to prepare cases effectively, efficiently, leading to improved outcomes for our cases. In 2024, we sent 130 individuals to professional development and continuing education training provided by various organizations and agencies, including the National District Attorneys Association, the Maryland State's Attorneys Association, the National Black Prosecutors Association, and the National Organization for Victim Advocacy. At a total of $122,000, increasing professional development training for our staff is a part of our 2024 and 2026 strategic plan to revamp the State's Attorney's Office. As a result of our increased staffing numbers, we have joined in the expansion of the Regional Veterans Court as part of the Central Maryland Regional Veterans Treatment Court, which is housed in our East Side District Courthouse. This means our team is now serving veteran cases from Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Carroll County, Hartford County, and Howard County by providing court-supervised treatment based on programming to victims facing misdemeanor charges in district courts, these district courts around the state. We're the sole prosecutorial agency for these types of cases in the surrounding jurisdictions. We've also been able to expand the team of our older and disabled unit, Persons Unit, or O D P U, which is housed in front of our Economic Crimes Division to provide specialized services and education to victims and witnesses who fall within this demographic. To date, O D P U team has hosted 26 community events and operates a helpline for older adults and individuals with disabilities to utilize them for referrals. The work of this unit has led to convictions that have resulted in thousands of dollars in restitution being secured for victims. In these three cases, a highlight alone, $179,000 in restitution was secured. In the McAllister case, a family member of the victim actually reported the offense to myself and my Economic Crimes Team during our annual older adult luncheon. Another unit that we've launched is our Cold Case Unit led by Chief Kurt Borkland, who has had decades of prosecution experience. This unit investigates unsolved cases, explores alternative leads, pursues new evidence to uncover the truth. Recent federal funding will support DNA testing and forensic genetic genealogy efforts in the coming years. The Cold Case Unit is just one of many that prosecutes felony-level cases. For 2024, we charged 2,891 felony cases, and we closed 3,115 felony cases. These are some of the most labor-intensive cases over that prosecutors can have, which makes these numbers all more impressive. Through our tireless and successful prosecution of violent offenses, we have seen homicides drop in Baltimore by 63% from that time in 2022, the time period that took office. Contributing to the drop of violence is the increase in incarceration of defendants convicted of using a firearm. These repeat violent offenders are often called. In '21 and '22, only 780 cases resulted in incarceration from individuals that used firearms. And that were repeat violent offenders. However, in '23 and '24, 2,129 cases resulted in incarceration of the use of firearms. One of the things that we looked at when we took office was how many individuals were committing the crimes, the violent actors. The data in the research says about 5,000 to 6,000 violent offenders running around the city with guns when they were doing the murders and the shooting. To this date, we figure we've put almost 2,500 of those individuals in prison. It's not something we're proud of in the sense to just to put people in jail, but it's in the sense that these are the individuals running around, shooting, and killing individuals. We've targeted the right people to put them in prison. Our prosecutors have been instructed to ask for enhanced penalties on these individuals, i.e. meaning the five years without the possibility of parole, meaning these sentenced for repeat violent offenders who are convicted of using his firearms. These are the individuals, once again, the data has shown us going after the violent individuals that have these handguns could and be, would be, would help to reduce the homicides and violence that we've seen in our city. We've also seen a decrease in numbers of individuals being ordered to probation for those offenses and an increased number of serving actual prison time. For instance, one of the things we noticed in '21 and '22, 656 offenders for violent offenses were ordered to do probation, meaning the repeat violent offenders, instead of going to prison, they were just getting probation and going back to the community and inflicting harm to the community, while 781 were ordered to serve time in '21, '22. '23, '24, only 245 were ordered to have probation, while 1,723 were given prison time. Ultimately, the violence we experienced as a city in '21 and '22 has reduced in '23 and '24, when more than double the number of violent repeat offenders were held accountable and removed from our communities. We also have been able to see from this is everybody working together in partnership to help reduce the crime violence. When looking at our major prosecutorial units, the lion's share of our caseloads land in the misdemeanor jury trial narcotics units. This is followed by felony, special victims, and GV gun violence enforcement cases. Our G V R S cases and homicide cases have the lowest percentage of cases of our homicide caseload continue to get smaller as the homicide rates go down. In a league of its own, our juvenile division, which saw dramatic increases in 2024 in auto thefts, carjackings, and robberies. This year, our juvenile division is also witnessing an increase in assaults compared to previous years. We have already had 67 juvenile cases charged in 2025 compared to a total of 47 total assault cases we had in all of 2024 involving juveniles. This data, of course, cannot include cases that we do not see because sometimes they may be offenses and, and for whatever reason, DJS has returned that child to their home immediately following the arrest. We have not received that information of that case from DJS. Our goal of 2026 budget is to increase staffing in our Evidence Review and Body-Worn Camera Division. In 2024, we only had six staff members on that team. We are very grateful to now have 21 staff members, but the workload remains severe. Ensuring accountability and transparency in law enforcement is crucial to fostering trust between the police and communities they serve. With over 2,000 law enforcement officers in BPD alone, our personnel unit has reviewed 1,916 cases, comprising 22,065 videos that totaled 14,621 hours of footage. It's important to know that when you talk about body-worn camera, what are we really talking about? So every single police officer goes in a community, they have the body-worn camera around them. They should have it operated. For instance, when a prosecutor receives a case, it could be five officers that are one scene for a handgun for an hour. That's five hours of body-worn camera. That prosecutor, or here we have, and what's been able to do, have this division, a body-worn camera division, they must review all five hours of body-worn camera. Now, it may only have five minutes of importance, but they have to look at all five hours. We have to do that under discovery rules. We have to understand and be prepared. God forbid the officer say something or someone else say something. We have to make sure that we're prosecuting the case purposely and doing it the correct way. That is why we look at this body-worn camera division. The more officers that every jurisdiction has, the more camera footage to review. For instance, for every 140 Baltimore City Police Officers, our office has, our office has one Evidence Review staffer. Howard County has 51 officers per staffer. Antirondo County has 69 officers per staffer. And Baltimore County has 112 officers per staffer. So what you clearly can see is that even though we have 15 staff members that are reviewing this, we still average one staffer for 140 officers. What the industry standard says should be about 110 officers for every one staffer. We're doing more with less compared to these other jurisdictions, but we still have so much more we need to do. It's clear that our division still requires additional personnel to review footage efficiently and maintain the transparency and constitutional policing. With that, I'd like to thank you. And if there are any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. State's Attorney Bates and the entire State's Attorney's Office, I want to thank you for your hard work and your dedication on behalf of the residents of this city. I will simply say that when you inherited the office, it was in turmoil. Staffing levels were dangerously low, and we were struggling on the crime fight. Several years later, this is an office that has been largely rebuilt. We're seeing renewed energy and purpose and dedication. And when it comes to the crime fight, we are winning. I said this to the Police Department, Sheriff. I'll say it again to Monsey when they come on later. The city of Baltimore is winning when it comes to the violent crime fight, and your office has played a major role in getting us there. And we still have a very, very long way to go to becoming the safe city that we all deserve. My first question for you, Mr. Bates, with the expiration of the State Discovery Compliance Camera Unit Grant, how will the services being provided be maintained? And will the responsibilities of that unit be managed any differently with the expiration of the grant?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you. On behalf of my entire office, I must say that I inherited an office that had a lot of really hard-working people who were very good, and they were doing the job. We just didn't know anything about it. I want to thank my executive team because without their leadership, they've been able to take a number of groups, a number of organizations, and move them in the right direction and together collectively, working with all the other public service agencies, whether it's the Baltimore Police Department, whether it's the Mayor's Offices, Monsey, whether it's the Sheriff's Department, we're working together as a team to get the job done. And for us, to answer your question, what the governor had given us a grant for two years, around $800,000, 863, 865, if I'm not mistaken. With that grant, we were able to hire at least 10 individuals for that body-worn camera division. Like I said, that is really, when people ask, what have you done to really make this change in terms of getting convictions? That is the secret sauce. You know, earlier I began to talk to you about a prosecutor. So let's say he's a prosecutor. And every prosecutor who has an illegal handgun goes into court. When they go into court, you know, they have their cases, they have to prepare them, but they still have trials, they have to return calls, they have to do all of that. But this one case involves five officers pulling an individual over to get a handgun. This prosecutor then, in the past, before I got there, would look at the five hours of body-worn camera, would then have to respond to a motion from the defense attorney, and would have to reach out to the officer and prepare their case. That prosecutor would take between eight and 12 hours of case trial prep. Let's say 10 hours. That prosecutor is now prepared. That one case took 10 hours. That prosecutor may have anywhere between five and 10 cases on their docket on Tuesday, and another five to 10 cases on their docket on Thursday. There just weren't enough hours. We sat down and talked to prosecutors and they asked at an interview, why are you leaving? The quality of life. I can no longer work seven days a week. I have no life. What's the biggest issue? Body-worn camera, body-worn camera, body-worn camera. First came into office, I said, hey, what's going on with the body-worn camera? Went to the governor, the governor gave us the grants. Now the grants have expired. One of the things we've asked for in our budget, we've asked for an additional $800,000, I believe, $64,000 to pay for this body-worn camera division. There is no more important division to the success of our office in the body-worn camera. What does that mean? Now instead of that prosecutor spending those five hours they can, on reviewing body camera footage, they now can spend those five hours preparing that case and other cases. They can reach out and talk to the witnesses, some of which are police officers, to bring them in, to question them, to say, what happened? Let's go over your testimony. That's how we began to flip the switch to win. Because now what happens? That division now will look at the body-worn camera, and it may only be five to 10 minutes worth of information on that body-worn camera that they really, that the prosecutor would need. Now, instead of spending five hours, they're spending 45 minutes, you know, 50 minutes, looking at the body-worn camera. They're able to take it, put it together. And now, that was the secret sauce we needed. We have asked the City Council, we've asked the Mayor's Office to provide us the extra $864,000. So, you know, one of the things they've talked about is like, oh, well, you have these 14 frozen pins. You can take some of the money from the frozen pins. It sounds good in theory. But the problem is that we've been asked to do so much more work. We're asked because now there are more arrests. Think my misdemeanor jury trial division, if I'm not mistaken, has almost doubled the cases now that they're doing last year compared to this year because the police are making more arrests. We have the prosecutors who are doing the heavy lifting. They're doing the work. And so from us, we need every single prosecutor we can have to do the work because we're having more work. But we also need the $864,000 because without that, and if we have to make a decision, our fear is then we would have to make cuts in supporting some of our partnership agencies and organizations because we just would have too much work and we could not continue the work of every single other organization in helping support them.
I appreciate that. And I will say for me, and just speaking to myself, for myself, nothing is more important than the safety of the people that we all serve. I want to be consistent. We've had a lot of conversations in this chamber over the last week about overtime and vacant pins. And the council has repeatedly expressed frustration about a pattern that we've seen where agencies will have a bunch of vacant pins, long-term vacancies, utilize excessive overtime, and by excessive, I mean not budgeted for overtime. And then the council is asked to sign and approve supplemental budgets. Would you please speak to what you are doing to reduce any kind of reliance on overtime, but more importantly, recruit and retain Deputy State's Attorneys across all divisions for your office?
No, I will. Thank you. You know, we can't, meaning prosecutors, they can't have overtime. If they had overtime, God forbid, we probably would be at BPD and Fire Department levels the amount of work that the men and women in Baltimore City offices put in. They have comp time. But I know some people have already used their comp time, have burnt up all the time period for comp time come March in terms of the amount of work they're doing. They're working these hours, so we're not getting the overtime. What we're looking at is, and it's important when you look at the pins, and how do we deal with the pins? We have different levels of pins. We have entry-level prosecutor pins. We have senior management pins. One of the things, the senior management pins pay more money. We've had a number of individuals, and I know some of the questions I know I'll be getting referenced to the budget and things like that. We have senior management pins, but we have vacancies in the senior management pins. We could easily just put individuals there, but we feel we can't put an individual in a senior management pin unless you actually have the ability and skill set to do that work. We didn't have those individuals when we first took the office. We also try to make sure we recruit individuals. We have some individuals who are recruited from the federal government that, who are senior-level attorneys that will be coming to our agency in the near future. They need to finish up cases with the federal government and other things. So being able to have those pins available, it has enticed us to be able to go out and recruit some of the best of the best. We recruited individuals from St. Mary's County who have been here to our office. We have a number of prosecutors. We had a 40 individual takedown that were former U.S. Attorneys that were, you know, Attorney General's Office. These types of high-level prosecutors. And so being able to have those pins to allow us to go out and get some of the best of the best and bring them into our office has allowed our office to expand, not only for us, but when you look at in terms of what we're doing with our partner agencies. For instance, we've had other agencies that would not normally reach out to our office to partner to do bigger cases that we're working with right now. And I think at the end of the day, there is a certain skill set and level of the prosecutors that they have in Baltimore City, and we're able to take these cases. But it's so important because they're no longer looking the body-worn camera. It allows them to do the investigation at a higher level than they've done that before. You know, I think with our office, it is the camaraderie you have with everybody. It's opportunity to have the pins that are there to recruit. Once again, you know, we're now, before, we almost had to beg for applications. We now have more applications that we know what to do with. I think one of the things that people don't always realize in terms of hiring prosecutors, it's not as fluid as people think. There are three time periods. Number one, prosecutors take a bar, I mean, young, young law students take the bar and pass it in July, and they find, they pass in December. We can hire in December. Then you take the bar in February and get sworn in in May. We can hire in May. And then you take the, we have prosecutor, well, attorneys who are law clerks for judges, and they have the opportunity to now finish the clerkship and come work for our office in September. So we're able to go ahead and focus on who we want, know the types of individuals, and the prosecutors are winning cases in the courtroom. And that has also shown other individuals, I want to be a part of that office as well.
I appreciate that. And I know that to be a prosecutor in Baltimore, you got to be gritty, you got to be tough, you got to have chutzpah, you got to want to get after it, just like being a teacher, just like being a police officer. This is a tough town, but we get the best in Baltimore. And my last question, talk to me about retention. I know one of the conversations we've had a lot with police, with other folks, is a dynamic where folks will come, get trained in Baltimore, get, maybe do a year or two, and then get snatched up by some other department, either to get higher pay or benefits or whatever, easier lifestyle. Talk to me about how your office is working to retain State's Attorneys, Deputy State's Attorneys, and what does the retention rate look like for you all right now?
Well, this is what I can say, just off the top of my head, the retention rate, you know. Mr. Beckham tells me attrition rate's about 5%. And what have we done differently? The biggest thing is the body-worn camera division. We sat down and talked to prosecutors. They had a better quality of life. For instance, there's one prosecutor, a very, a senior prosecutor, who I used to, as a defense attorney, had many murder cases with, and left our office to go to another agency and spent a little time in that agency, but came back. The reason that prosecutor came back was because we have an organization that fosters support, just fosters an individual's trying to balance work-life balance and fosters a team mentality that we're in this together. I think that has been what's really big. The young prosecutors aren't prosecutors because they're trying to make a lot of money. This, being a lawyer with that law degree, they have sometime a lot of debt. But what they will do is they're being prosecutors because they love the work. They love working for the community, serving the community. They love going to court, they love battling, they love the trials. We're able to provide that. That's why the training is so important. You know, we go to MSAA training, and there's a program where it trains all the young prosecutors, and prosecutors come from around the state, and we have a training session where some of the people you see in this audience are some of the teachers. And so we're able to have that type of camaraderie. They know that when they go to court, they have a supervisor sitting next to them They know that when they go to court, they have a supervisor sitting next to them so that they can get better as a trial lawyer. Look, if we get five or six years from them, I'm very, very happy, because oftentimes they're going to take that skill set, they're going to have bills, they're going to have the law degree, you know, they're going to have to go out and make money, and I understand that. But we have a lot of people who are here because they love the job. And once again, when we're able to get the body-worn camera division, that freed them up to have a different quality of life. And also, when you couple that with the training and allowing them to get better at what they do in their craft, and allow them to be who they are as prosecutors, not micromanage them, but give them the ability to have the discretion to be treated as an adult and as a lawyer, that is what I believe we've been able to do to make sure we keep as many young prosecutors and experienced prosecutors as possible.
Thank you, State's Attorney Bates. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, thank you so much for, you and your team, for the work you can continue to do in our city and helping to keep our residents and communities safe. The role that you play is very important, and it does not go unnoticed, and we really appreciate that. So I'm going to take a different spin, and I'm, first, I want to congratulate you for using the term older adults and not seniors. As an older adult, and also, what'd you say? The only one, that's the older adult he was saying on this council. And also serving on the Older Adult Commission, and also the lead in creating the Older Adult Office, and I'm sure you know Andoria Harmon. And we, in fact, we had our meeting with her earlier today, and that office has been there for a year now, and we gave her the charge to take this to another level. So we have proved that that office continues to help our older adult population, which is a very strong and hardy population in the city of Baltimore. And I see you are doing some things to help keep our older adults and disabled persons safe. We're also about partnerships and collaboration with all of our agencies and trying to think of creative ways to help each other out, help each agency out. And first, I guess I'd like you just to talk a little bit about how you affect and help older adults, and maybe we can see how you can make that partnership and collaboration happen with that particular office.
Well, I'll touch a little bit about it, then I'd like to have Sher Green, the Division Chief, who really established that agency, come up and speak. Now, Older Adult Division, I think is very important, because one of the things we found out was that older adults didn't feel like the criminal justice system was, had their best interest. They felt, for instance, an older adult would go ahead and receive a subpoena, or receive something, something to come to court, and it may be emailed to them, and they didn't underst, they didn't, may not have an email address. Or what, when they received something, they were terrified because they had never spoken to the prosecutor, because, you know, they have a landline, they don't have an answer machine, the prosecutor couldn't get to them because they're in court. So also, one of the things we need to do is educate older adults about their rights, educate older adults about what's going on, educate older adults about what services that our office offered. And so that was a directive that I gave Ms. Green. And, you know, Chief Green has done a great job taking a small group, and look, she's head of the Economic Crimes Division, but she's also now headed the same way, the Older Adult Division. Chief Green, I'd like to go ahead and have you discuss a little bit.
Good evening. You had mentioned whether or not we could explore collaborating with the Older Adult Unit from the mayor's office, and actually, we have since the conception or inception of our unit, been working with Ms. Harmon. As a matter of fact, today, Ms. Harmon had a luncheon learn at Village Baptist Church. She invited us to come, bring our resources. We were there. I also presented to the older adults that were there on how to prevent identity fraud, how to protect their identity, how to be proactive if they believe that they may have become a victim. We also have a toll-free number that we set up for our Older Adult and Disabled Persons Unit, which when any older adult in our city feels that they may have become a victim or that they have filed a police report and they never heard anything back, they don't know where to go, we want to at least be an information resource for them. So we man that daily nine to five, and get back to them if they call or if they email, and we keep track of the responses. Many of the contacts we get do turn into full-blown investigations for my unit, which concentrates on financial exploitation and concentrates on some extreme targeted abuse of older adults because they are older adults. We particularly take an interest in that, because we feel that it is unconscionable for older adults to be abused or targeted because they are more vulnerable. Often, persons who target them presume that they will not come to court, that their health or their challenges may impede them from court, and that they will get away with the crime because of that. Because of that, I did go to Annapolis and testify on a bill that was put forth by the Attorney General's Office, asking for change in our evidentiary rules so that state, recorded statements taken from persons who may have just the early stages of the onset of dementia, who can tell us about whether or not they consented to certain financial transactions, certain physical abuse that happened to them, certain neglect that happened to them, that if we have a recorded statement and they become unavailable by the time the case gets to trial, that that evidence can be introduced. So that is still working its way through Annapolis. In addition, our state legislature came up with a task force commission last year, asking for a statewide commission looking at crime, I mean, at statutes that impact crimes against older adults. I was part of the committee dealing specifically with laws. There was also other elements of that task force that put together other things that impact the quality of life. As you may know, the governor's goal for older adults is that they be able to stay in place and live a quality life in place, and that's our goal as well. My staff, although small, are quite mighty, and we've had them trained on how to interview and how to interact with persons who are, have been impacted by trauma. And financial exploitation is often not seen as traumatic, but if one has lost their life savings, if one has been taken advantage of by a neighbor or a family member, they start questioning themselves about everything, and it triggers depression, and it sometimes can impact physical health of the individual. It is truly trauma. And so we have taken training to be trauma-informed and apply that approach when we're working with those vulnerable victims. We have great sensitivity and concern for them, and we try to get them the help that they need, as well as interacting as a support for the other attorneys in our office that may be prosecuting a case in which there was some impact on an older adult. So that's our goal, is to make sure that it permeates the services and the way that we approach prosecution for the entire office.
Thank you so much for that added information that I'm sure most of us didn't know anything about. So my charge to, or our charge to Andoria was, you know, her year is up with getting, because, you know, a person that starts off their new office, it's demanding. So we gave her a charge. Now, this is the time to really start honing in on your performance measures, and what you just described would be a wonderful collaboration and connection for the performance measures for both offices. So I welcome and hope that we have some figures together with her office and yours on a lot of the things that you just mentioned, because our conversation with a number of problems happen in housing facilities, and I'm sure that's where a lot of targeted crime on older adults happens. So we're at a time now where we really need to do these strong partnerships, collaboration, and showing with performance measures, because that's how we continue to verify where we can help put more money. So I appreciate that added information. You were going to add something?
I did want to add one thing, which is that this past year that we're into our, going into our third year, this past year, we collaborated with the Sheriff's Department, Baltimore City Police Department's seniors liaison, I believe they do use the term seniors, we use older adult. And we also collaborated with Ms. Harmon's office and went out to visit during luncheon learn sessions, senior housing complexes. And we've been making our rounds for the last two years, bringing them more information, including when we can get the Baltimore City Police Department to work with us, bringing their bracelet program, which is if a person were to get confused or lost while they're out, if they are registered and the officer encounters them, that there is a number assigned to the bracelet, they can call that in, radio that in, and they can get the emergency contact for that person that's on file and identify their address. Because sometimes, health is fine today and tomorrow, it is not, could be in a car accident and get confused, or be a victim of a, I saw a purse snatching the other day, which troubled me, I haven't seen that in many years. But, so that's one of the things we try to do, is bring them resources, bring them resources, and give them different perspectives. In addition to that, our office, I would be remiss if I didn't indicate that our office has had an annual luncheon that we host, in which we bring people from Secret Service, we bring people from federal agencies that talk about fraud and exploitation, that talk about what elder abuse actually looks like. We can, and Adult Protective Services comes in, and we started out with a goal of two-hundred-and-fifty, we had two-hundred-and-eighty. The second year, our goal was five-hundred, and we had in excess of five-hundred, and our goal this year is to host seven-hundred older adults, so that we can get as much information as possible out to them.
Thank you. Continue to document that data and all these locations, it's just so important, and it helps the fourteen district council members as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate it, thank you. And then my second question, I guess with victim support services, talk about the programs you have in place to ensure victims have access to counseling, legal assistance, and any necessary services within that victim support services.
Well, one of the things I always talk about, one of the things that I feel we also were able to do with turning around some of the dismissals because the victims weren't participating, is we had to change our victim witness division. So we reached into Baltimore County, Baltimore County, as a criminal defense attorney, they always had their witnesses, they always had their victims. And there were people that ran that program that had, you know, I talked about the secret sauce with the, with the body-worn camera, but you also have to have the witnesses to testify. And so one of those individuals, Amanda Grantham, we hired her, she was one of the first hires, I'd like to have her come on up and discuss that, this is her division, she can talk about some of the new changes that they've been able to do, and what she's been able to do with the grants that we received from the governor's office.
Thank you.
So victim witness, my name's Amanda Grantham, I'm the chief of the victim witness division. Some of the things that we do to support our victims and witnesses, we have two different units within victim witness, we have a coordination and we have services. So on our coordination side, we have individuals who actually go to court, they're the ones that are reaching out, touching base with them, making sure that they have access to get to court, so transportation, if they need interpreters, if they're coming from a completely different state, we'll fly them in, get them hotels, get them per diem, things like that. Those individuals go and sit with them in court to just be that liaison between the ASAs and our victims and witnesses. We have individuals that are in district court, district court special victims, and in our circuit court and juvenile. So we're spread out a little bit all throughout the city. On the services side, we have our relocation unit, and then we also have our family bereavement center. So when you ask about therapy and things like that, we have an in-house therapist. Ms. Kim Holmes is our director of that, and she sees anyone who has experienced a loss because of crime in the city, whether it's through homicide, manslaughter, things like that. So that is all free of cost, that is supported by our Victims of Crime Act grants, or our VOCA grant, so they don't have to use their health insurance, anything like that. We get referrals from our other city agencies, our partners from BPD, and then individuals within the state's attorney's office. Our relocation unit also provides services with support of funds that we receive from the MSAA. So we get almost two million dollars a year to support our relocation efforts, so any victim or witness of crime, whether the case is charged or uncharged, is able, we really work very closely with BPD and their witness relocation unit, and they will do a threat assessment for us, so if there's a threat identified, we are able to relocate them, put them in immediate, whether it's a hotel to get them out, because it's an emergency situation, or if we have to, like, long-term, you know, a domestic violence victim is living with the defendant, she is an immediate threat, so we are able to completely just pull her out of the house, her him or her out of the house, relocate them, support them with a couple months' rent and security deposit and things like that.
Thank you so much for that added information and update. And thank you, SA Bates, for your, everything that you continue to do. You have really turned around the office, and please, keep up the good work. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll stop there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I want to briefly talk about vacancies. For Director Larson, there are a number of vacancies that are three years plus within this agency. Can you give me the total amount of the ones that are over three years? Like the number, excuse me, the number of positions that are, have been vacant for more than three years, and the total amount of those?
So there are five vacancies in the state's attorney's office that have been vacant for more than three years. That includes a paralegal position, a second paralegal position, and assistant state's attorney position, and then two new, the pins that are flagged as new positions. These are positions that were created in a prior budget, but were never taken through the appropriate channels to get formally classified into a position so that they could be filled. I believe that both of those new positions date back to the previous state's attorney. In terms of the salary of those, just the salary, just the FY26 salary of those five positions is just over three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars.
State's Attorney Bates, regarding those positions, just specifically the ones that are, have been vacant for longer than three years, can you talk about, you spoke about this briefly in terms of some of the other positions, but for these, what are the barriers that are preventing you from filling these positions?
I'm going to have Mr. Stuart Beckham, my head of HR, to speak on this particular issue.
The positions that Director Larson is referring to, I would need to know if they're general fund positions or if they are grant-funded positions. Our paralegal count right now is one vacant paralegal position, which we would fill once we identify which particular unit is short on paralegals. We've had an aggressive effort to make sure that each one of our trial divisions has had at least one paralegal with their division, so there's just one out of our eight or nine trial divisions. The two new positions that she's referring to, yes, they are sitting in our budget, we inherited those from the prior administration. Sorry, you can't hear me? Okay. So the two positions that she said are the new positions, we inherited from the prior administration's budget, and we have not specifically identified them at this time, so she is correct about that information. As far as the assistant state's attorney position is concerned, we fill our state's attorney, ASA positions rather frequently. We have an aggressive effort, along with two of the other deputies that work with me. So I would have to get with Ms. Larson to see which one she's specifically talking about. Because of the fourteen positions that we're getting in FY26, we've already identified four of those, and they're not even going to be on board till July 1. So I would have to get with her office to see what specific one she's speaking of.
It's only, it's only five positions, and the one that you're referring to, I guess my concern is, is you inherited, you inherited?
We inherited the two that are called new positions, that they are not specifically classified in any particular classification. Out of three-hundred-and-eighty-nine, you're right, there are five of them.
And one sounds like you can fill this pretty quickly.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. My assistant state's attorney positions I can fill yesterday.
Well, you got one, it says it's been sitting there for three years, so I hope that you have the conversation with Director Larson, so you can, so you're able to utilize it.
And let me just add for you, that we have certain grants with our ASA positions, one of our comprehensive violence program grant positions for attorneys, and we may have used the money for that unfunded ASA position, because we do run over those grants that we've had for years, the amount of money is still the same, so we have to make sure that we balance our books. But I will get with Director Larson and her budget analyst team to make sure that we're talking about the right position.
Okay. Director Larson, within, within your records, was that a grant, fill position, or was that?
These are all positions that in the fiscal twenty-five budget were part of the general fund at the time that we had. at the time that we adopted the budget. I want to note that I'm referencing data not as of today. My data is pulled in May, a couple of weeks ago. So I think, Mr. Beckham, I can see that one of these paralegals had a tentative start date in the time since the data was pulled.
That's correct. And just for the record, we started to support positions on May 2, June 2, which is this past Monday, and we have quite a few people starting on this upcoming Monday, June 9, which is a mix of ASAs, assistant state's attorneys, law clerks as well.
I appreciate your response, and thank you, Director Lawson.
Thank you.
We're going to go to Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. I first wanted to say thank you for rebuilding the bench, for, for judges to make sure that we're able to prosecute offenders up and down the board, whether it's big or small. And I'm actually really surprised that I'm going to be the first person to say congratulations on your nuptials. I can't believe you guys let that fall to me. So. Yeah. Yes. Yep.
Mean the button. I apologize.
So I want to talk about the prosecution of offenses, and in particular, open air drug markets, right? And so we're hearing consistent concerns from residents and businesses about the open air marijuana, or mostly marijuana, drug dealing at the Emerson Village Shopping Center. This is something that has been going on for as long as I've been alive, right? And what we've also been hearing from our constituents, also from the Southwest Police Department as well, is folks are being arrested. Folks are being caught on CCTV with close to a pound, somewhere around. They're being taken downtown, and it's being declined to be, they're being declined to be charged. And once again, I say I know this because I get the calls all the time. In every community association meeting, every commander's meeting, any type of public forum, the, the concern along that Emerson Village corridor is the shopping center and just how they just stand out there and they're able to sell whatever drug or narcotic that they're selling at the time, right? I acknowledge that a pound may only be small, or I don't know what the trigger point is in order for your office, your office to step in. But I do know that this is happening on a daily basis at the shopping center and possibly with my colleagues and around the city. So I'm going to ask you, at what point are we going to start holding these individuals accountable? Because I think that's very important, that if we're going to talk about, like, being tough on crime and we're going to try to quell the fears of folks and these quality of life issues, letting folks go to, like, go downtown and then beat the police officer back up to the shopping center in most cases, gives them an entitlement, like, an air entitlement that they can just sell marijuana whenever they want. And so I want to ask you, like I said, how are you holding these drug dealers, suspected drug dealers operating in public places accountable? And does your office track who have been arrested by BPD on multiple occasions, yet being, yet they were declined for being charged by your office?
I want to do two things. First, I want to talk to you about what we're doing in terms of holding them accountable. Then I'd like to have my deputy, Tom Donnelly, but discuss that in terms of what we're tracking. But I also want to thank you, because you reached out to our office, you sat down with our team, and we listened to the issues that you have in the community. So that encouraged us to say, you know what, what are we really doing in terms of these individuals, the drugs, with specifically cannabis? So I think Mr. Donnelly has, we did a case study. I do have a couple copies if, am I allowed to hand them out to you? A couple copies of the case study. And what does this case study mean? So just like the residents up there in Emerson are having problems and issues, these are problems and issues in everybody's district. And one of the things, we said, okay, we work with the police, and there was an individual, and I'm going to give you his name because the case was out there, State of Maryland versus Montez Smith, C24CR-24-000652, a Baltimore city case. So in January 2024, Baltimore Police Department, they get information about a drug trafficking organization selling nothing but marijuana, and they're selling it over in Cherry Hill called Young Money Chasers. That's the name of the crew. That's the name of the group that's selling this weed, allegedly. So what the police do is they look to figure out what's going on, the housing Cherry Hill, housing complex, and they found a young person named Montez Smith. He's the focus. They st, they spot what's going on. They soup, they, they, they pretty much set up an operation where they're get, looking to see surveillance, 70-hour surveillance the Baltimore City Police Officers do for this. They realize Mr. Smith, I believe, has a gun registered to him legally, but they're watching individuals sell this marijuana, these drugs, distributing items, thousands of dollars per day of illicit marijuana. That, to me, seems to be the issue that so many organizations, so many groups are having in the city. So we were paying a close attention to this. May 22 of 2024, the police execute two search and seizure warrants at the location, one on his car and one in his house. On, in his car, they find detectives recovered 28 pounds of weed, cannabis, and a handgun magazine from the vehicle. From the apartment, detectives recovered jewelry in the value of excess of $100,000, a handgun, and $43,000 US currency. We would think that would be a great case. That's a good case. Person, 28 pounds of quote-unquote weed, handgun, even though the gun was legally purchased, legally registered, our argument was, you have this gun and it's here to protect your drugs. Therefore, you should automatically receive five years of other possibility of parole. This individual goes to bail review. At the bail review, unfortunately, a member of Safe Street shows up and somehow is identified by the court, and I guess speaks on behalf of this person. Something happened there. And the judge releases Mr. Smith to the community, and he gives him what's called an unsecured $100,000 bail. Means you don't have to do anything other than sign your name, and if you don't come, then somehow you owe $100,000, right? Now, was there a member of the, let's say, of, of Safe Street? Did that mean that they got released? I don't know. But the simple fact, that kind of hurt us, you know, I, I feel, I feel. So this gentleman, we put our case together. We, while he's awaiting trial, he doesn't do what he's supposed to. So then the judge brings him in and puts him on electronic home detention, right? And then we go to trial. We go to trial on February 3, 2025. We introduce the evidence, do everything that we need to do, and it's a bench trial. During the bench trial, the judge does not find him guilty of handgun in terms of the gun protecting the drugs, because the magazine was in the vehicle with the 28 pounds, and the judge felt that that did not mean that there was a gun to protect the drugs. I don't understand that one, but hey, that's what it is. However, the 28 pounds, the judge found him guilty of possession of intended tribute and distribution of marijuana. So he sends him back home on electronic home detention, awaiting sentencing. We're like, 28 pounds of marijuana, we know we're going to send you to prison. Well, while he's awaiting sentencing, he does, he, he absconds, does something on electronic home detention. Now this time, the judge puts him in jail. So he's sitting in jail, awaiting sentencing. 30 days later, he's sentenced, receives five years, suspend all but the time served, sent him right home. So we realize is that even when we have a 28-pound case of marijuana, here you have a circuit court judge who absolutely did nothing. The police spent hundreds of hours in terms of the work. Our office spent hours, but nothing happened. So, you know, you brought up a great point to us, and that was what made us do this case study. So I really have to thank you for the leadership that you showed with that. But we sat down, we talked to Baltimore City Police Department, we said, well, we have to do more. And so one of the things, we do have a amount. Now, we don't always want to save the amount in terms of what we look at, because Baltimore City Police Department, when they have a certain amount of marijuana, there's one main machine that they can go ahead and give the analysts, they got to analyze the drugs. Just because a police officer's out there and say, gets marijuana off you, smells like weed, that officer can't testify, has training expertise as marijuana. It has to be analyzed. Baltimore City Police Department has this machine. It's one machine. It's very expensive. So we have to be a little judicial resources. So Tom Donnelly took it upon himself, after speaking with you and your team, to work with the police department to come up with a real viable plan. It doesn't just affect you, but we wanted to make sure it affected everybody, because I know, Councilman, one of the issues you have is they stand outside your, your, your council district and sell weed. So we have to do something here. So I do want you to understand, we heard what you had to say. I would like Mr. Donnelly to come up and to really talk about the plan that we have put in, that we're working with Baltimore City Police Department. Just because we didn't get the time that we wanted in terms of the amount of jail time, we found this young man. In terms of if he violates, and we checked to see, if he violates, we will be right there in court asking the judge to hold that young person accountable. However, we can't force the judges to give a certain amount of jail time. Mr. Donnelly, you want to go ahead and talk about what's going on?
Sure. Thank you. Tom Donnelly, Deputy State's Attorney. Sir, after our conversation, we did relook at these things. And to give credit, BPD reached out to us as well because their district commanders have been hearing from the communities and, and seen what's happening with the marijuana, the cannabis. And cannabis is a little complicated because the legalization and then how it's viewed and, and handled by the courts. I know we were in the public safety meeting. I don't think the whole, the whole council was there, but there was, there was an issue with, well, strike that. One of the complicating things is that the amount of hours and capacity for both BPD and the state's attorney's office in prosecuting cannabis cases, in the case study on the back page, you'll see all the hours put in, including 20 hours of watching body worn camera footage and 70 hours of surveillance by the police. We had, you know, it went to trial, which means we had three detectives testifying in court and not on the street. We had a drug analyst testifying, not analyzing more drugs, and we had a firearms examiner. So we're, we're pulling those people off the street. So what we wanted to look at was capacity. So prior to the last, once a month, we meet with BPD's executive team. Prior to the last executive meeting with BPD, DC Jones had reached out to me to talk about cannabis specifically and, and these open air drug markets. So we collected data on, you know, what's being charged, what are the dispositions in court, which are not, I mean, to be honest, the dispositions are not what we would want to see because of the views towards marijuana. But what we, what we decided was that we're going to come up with a plan to start enforcing against these open air drug markets, regardless of amounts that are recovered, regardless of if it's one baggie or two. But going after those problems that you've identified also, and that we know are historically problem areas and, and corners. And so we've already reached out to BPD's lab to talk to them about capacity with the machines and the analysts, because if they go into the district court, that analysis has to come back within 30 days. Otherwise, the case is already asking for a postponement because we don't have an analysis. Circuit court, we have a little bit longer time period. But, so we've started the conversations with BPD lab. We've started the conversations with our charging division, Patrick Motze, who's here. He's the chief of our charging division, about what it would look like when we clear these corners so that we can make sure these individuals are getting booked through central booking, because then we would be sending requests to the lab to make the, analyze it regardless of the amounts or how many, how it was packaged or any of that, because we know it was one of these, one of these corners, one of these targeted areas that we were looking at. So we do have, we have, we've had multiple conversations with BPD right now. We're trying to figure out the, the, the final, what it's going to look like. But, you know, we'd be happy to update, you know, this, this council on how that goes. We'd like to start it this summer, I think, and, and start doing it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
I think the tools are there. We just got to, the last thing we want to do is just make sure we're not going to flood the lab with more than they can handle or do something that's going to cause something else to lose focus, you know?
Yeah. And I, I appreciate that answer and look forward, one, two, I think we have a meeting sometime later this month. We have a meeting sometime later this month on the books. But any, any way that you need our office to help out, we're definitely going to be involved. But also just want to state, go to my next question. I'll be brief. I understand that there are issues on how the judges handle it, how the, the tests are, the, the capacity of BPD to test it. But if we don't allow these cases to take its due process, to see where the ball is being dropped, then we are doing the public a disservice. I hear the reasons, but I'm going to be honest, the folks in the eighth district that go draw a pass, they don't hear reasons, they just hear excuses. And so I want to make sure that we are answering the public's call. I want to make sure that we're getting things right, and I want to make sure that we don't continuously hear, because I know you hear when you come to my district, and that we're doing nothing. BPD's doing nothing. My office is doing nothing. If the ball's being dropped somewhere, let's see where the ball's being dropped, and then we, as a city council, will do, we have to do oversight-wise to make sure that whoever's dropping the ball is going to pick it up. So I, I thank you for that answer, and I look forward to working with you on this matter. So thank you for that. And then just one quick question. There's been growing concern amongst state's attorneys, local state's attorneys, district, district attorneys across the country about the federal government's increasingly singular focus on immigration enforcement. We've seen federal law, we've heard about federal law enforcement agencies that were once primarily focused on dismantling violent and drug trafficking organizations through tools like surveillance and wiretapping, now being redirect, redirected towards immigration cases instead. Have you seen that shift happen here in Baltimore? And if so, how's it affecting our ability to address violent crime and protect public safety in our city?
You know, one of the things we're pretty lucky about in terms of, we work very well with the police force. The one thing that we've also tried to do, we try to be proactive. So we entertain a number of U visas. So when an individual who may be an immigrant from another country and has been a victim of crime or may have witnessed a crime, we're willing to try to give a U visa to do everything we can to allow them the safety of that process. We've had incidents, we may have had a victim who may not be from this country, but maybe have been picked up by ICE, and if they're part of the case, we, we will, and we do have the relationship with ICE to reach out to say, hey, this is an individual that we need for a B, C, and D case. We've tried to monitor that. Our thing is, if you are a victim, I don't care where you're from, because you do have a right to be protected, and we're going to stand up for you. And it doesn't matter what part of the federal government, we're at least going to do everything we can to make sure that you have your day in court and that you're hopefully made whole. And that's why we've tried to use the U visa when we feel as applicable there. Even when some individuals didn't even think they needed it, we suggested that they did.
Yeah. And I appreciate that answer. But, so you, you haven't seen, like, the shift or anything?
You know, we, we've sat and talked to the new US attorney. They have their own policies, but we haven't participated in anything that they're doing. I don't know what they're doing, per se. We just look at the cases that are brought before us, and if we see an individual that we feel needs to make sure they have a U visa and qualifies for it, then we do everything we can to make sure that they know that's an option for them.
Thank you for your openness, your honesty, and congratulations on jumping the broom.
Thank you very much.
Regarding Councilman Gray's meeting request or committee request, we have a number of council members who are having issues with open air drug markets. It would be all of us. You're absolutely right. You first. We doing too much on the last day. Okay, so can, I want to update the, the committee request. Obviously, you're going to have your meeting, but could you also just brief the council president's office so we can also just make sure we can identify every member who's interested so they can get that information as well?
Yeah. Absolutely. I think one of the things we would ask for is to make sure we're being complete for any of the locations that the council members are aware in their districts, to make sure we have a complete list of those. I know the BPD commanders probably have 99%, but there might be one or two off. So getting that information from the council members would be helpful, too.
Okay. We'll work to get that information for you. Thank you. We're going to move to Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. State's Attorney, who's the judge on, on this case? Anybody?
Ah, yeah, it is. He's a new judge, Zaslow.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's my only question.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question is just a clarifying question for Director Larson. Those pins that are vacant three years or more, what service does that fall under?
All five of those services are budgeted in Service 115, Prosecution of Criminals.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Mr. State's Attorney, again, thank you very much for all that you're doing. I want to put Green Mountain Venable on that list. Obviously, we had a mass shooting recently. Whether or not that's related, I don't know. But, you know, and there have been some arrests, so we're going to need your help. You know, we've had three arrests based on that mass shooting. And I, you know, so...
May I ask you a question very quickly?
Yeah.
Those were three, and I want to make sure that my team pays close attention to this. Will you please email me the information and I will make sure that my team keeps you up to date about the arrests and what's happening with the prosecution on those particular cases?
Yeah, I have all the details, so I will absolutely send that over to you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And that'll be super important for the community as well. So I want to switch a little bit to the citation docket. And we talked a lot about the citation docket here in this room last year, probably the exact same date. And we have heard from the police department that it was hard to implement because their systems weren't really tied to yours. It was paper and they were going into electronic. Lots of confusion about what's happening there. I didn't see it at all in the budget book in terms of where that falls and what the, are you going to try this again? What's the next step in there? Obviously, there were a couple of us that had some concerns about how it was being implemented. So can you talk a little bit more about what is happening with that?
Yes, I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about it. Then after that, I have Ms. Trish Deros from my team stand up and talk a little bit more. The citation docket, you know, is a vehicle or tool that we put in place, I mean, in the office, so that officers could go ahead and hold people accountable, but would not necessarily have to make an arrest. You don't lead to mass incarceration. Our hope and goal is to write a citation and writing the citation, this individual come to court, it'd be office services, first offenses, five hours community service, second time, 10 hours community service. This case, these citations were in court three times a month. And East Side Courthouse, which is North Avenue, Wabash Courthouse, Amputasca Courthouse. However, they just weren't writing enough citations. We can't force anybody to write the citations. You know, I know Ms. Deros did a lot of trainings, went as many places she possibly could, talked to a number of different groups and organizations. But for whatever reason, they attempted to try to write citations. We'd have maybe a good week or two and then nothing else. I think it even got to the point where some of the officers thought like, well, we don't want to have to just always come to court. You don't come to court when you write a citation, you know, that first time. And so we're having that conversation with them. You know, one of the things I've also said as well, if, let's take about the cannabis issue. If it's less than a certain amount, write a citation. When you write the citation, we still get, now get to bring them in, talk to them. I know one of the conversations that Deputy Donnelly has had with, I think, one of the colonels up in the northern northwest was how can we deal with this issue in terms of the marijuana, having, writing more citations and what does this look like? Bless you. And then undoing all of that, to me was very important, like little issues. Well, if they take the marijuana off of them, they don't want to have the officer running down to put the marijuana in ECU right away. Is it possible then you maybe have a little place there at the district and at the end of the shift, all the marijuana you got? So we're having those conversations. I can't speak what BPD is going to do. I will tell you this, every month we meet with the BPD executive team. And I do know this is a work in progress for the Baltimore Police Department. This is our third year attempting this. The first year, you know, just came and it was like the preseason. We're expecting more of a robust issue this year. However, Ms. Deros, I'd like you to go ahead and finish speaking on that issue.
Hi, my name is Patricia Deros. I've been here before. Yes, I understand. So the citation docket has now been in effect for two years. The total number of citations issued in the two years as of the April docket is 956. The Baltimore City Police issued 234 of those citations. Not very many in comparison to all the other agencies. Then of those 234, 90% of those are for misdemeanor shopliftings. They are not for community nuisance crimes. They're not for open containers, they're not for public urination, they're not for any other crimes that the communities are asking to be charged. The dockets were not very large, obviously. We have gone from three days in a month to one day a month. The docket has now heard the third Wednesday of each month in the Wabash District Court. And in April, no, in May, my docket was 82 cases. So there has been an increase, but not necessarily from the Baltimore City Police, but from various agencies. I'm preparing the docket for the June 18th docket, and as of today, I have 67. I have one littering from Baltimore City Police coming on a docket. I have a couple of CDS possession cases, but they are, probably one is from Baltimore City Police, the others are from the MDTA Police. So they're not what we expect and it's not what we hope. We have offered community service in 182 cases and 131 people have completed the community service. Others decided they didn't want to do it and they went to trial. We've had a number of warrants issued, 173 warrants have been issued over the two-year period. People have been summoned, they don't come to court. We're given two opportunities to come to court before warrants are issued. And the, we've had 131 people who have completed alternatives to prosecution other than just community service, which is generally the alcohol, tobacco, cannabis possession cases and the comptroller's office cases where people don't have business licenses or failed to apply a business license. So that enforcement is in effect. If the individuals go and get their licenses and become up to date and pay their taxes and pay their fees, then we'll null prosecute. So that's the alternative prosecution that we deal with.
So the agency that issues them the most is the MDTA?
The MTA issues the most citations.
The MTA issues the most citations, which means that they're doing it along bus stops, the light rail, the subway, that kind of thing.
Correct. And they are generally open containers and trespasses and those types of cases.
Gotcha. The design of the citation docket though wasn't for that, right? It was for really trying to get at the open air drug market stuff. It was trying to get rid to the nuisance crimes in the, in communities. And so we're not seeing that simply because the police aren't issuing those or other agencies aren't issuing. It's only enforcement agencies that can, right? We just saw the sheriff, I did not think to ask him this question.
So the sheriff's office have not issued many citations. They've only issued 10 altogether. And that's been recent. And I have done, probably in the last eight months, I began training the sheriff's office on how to write citations. I've done, I think, four trainings in the last six months with them. And I spoke to Sheriff Kogan again today, and he would like me to work with his people again because they're doing that new enforcement with the liquor stores. So we want to make sure that they're charging those properly and they're writing the citations so that we can go into effect. The sheriff's office citations were basically people who were at the Ravens games and they were selling outside of the stadium and didn't have permits or didn't have licenses to sell. And they were selling counterfeit Ravens jerseys or other items. They were selling alcohol outside of the stadium and that's what they were charging.
I mean, all the police were with us the other night, last night. It all runs together at this point. And unfortunately, I was in and out of that hearing, so I wasn't able to ask this question. But I do think that, you know, there's value in what you're trying to do here, but we need to figure out what's the best way to make sure that, and I think it's a logistical issue. I think it's just they're so used to right now, electronic and citations on paper and how do we make that?
It's still all paper for all agencies except for the MDTA. The MDTA do electronic, but they're not really electronic in that they have the paper copy attached to a typed electronic copy.
Okay, well, that's going to be something that we have to deal with. But where, what service would the docket be under in your budget? 115. So it is under the, where you have all the ASAs as well?
I am the only ASI.
Oh, that is doing that, gotcha, okay. That would be why it's not, it's not spelled out in here. Got it, I got it. Okay, thanks a lot. I just, you know, I understand what you were trying to do here. We still have a lot of things that we need to be able to pay attention to. I mean, we've got graffiti, vandals in terms of graffiti, we've got, you know, those kinds of things. So there's got to be more that we can do. And maybe it's not the police, maybe it's some other way of doing it, I have no idea. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I think it is the police. Ms. Melissa, I have my glasses on, but you're representing, I'm trying to see if it's somebody else in the room, but I don't see who I'm looking for. Can you, and this isn't a committee request, this is a formal request. I was one of those council members who was supportive of this because I'm dealing with quality of life issues, just like everybody, every other council member. But my folks wanted this, like they wanted citations to be issued. And I'm not going to ask you why BPD is not issuing the citations, but can we just make sure that we're able to get, I'm able to get a meeting and any other council member that we're able to identify to fully understand why BPD has such low numbers?
Absolutely.
For participating within this program.
Yeah, I'd like that, to be part of that.
Because we were definitely off message yesterday. Not off message, but it was not maybe budget related with some of those questions. But folks were expressing, council members were expressing their frustrations about open air drug markets and other quality of life issues. And I feel like you hit everything.
Yep, so Madam Chair, I will...
With everything you got.
Yep. I'll connect with BPD and then reach out to the council to determine who would like a briefing or meeting so we can make sure that that's able to be welcomed.
Okay, so we got four right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Porter?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I apologize. I believe Deputy Donnelly just wanted to clarify one last issue in reference to the open air drug markets so that everybody was clear.
I was just speaking with Councilmember Gray. I just want to be clear that the cooperation and the meetings that are going on right now with BPD are specifically related to the cannabis shops. I don't want to over, I don't want to sit here tonight and overcommit BPD to clearing every drug corner in Baltimore City by the end of the summer. That's not what I'm trying to do. But what we are trying to do is relook at cannabis and get a little bit more into the nuts and bolts of what we can do with that. So when we're asking, the current thing that we're talking about, when we're asking about open air drug markets, it's specifically those difficult ones with cannabis that we can't, you know, we've been otherwise unable to close down. So I just, thank you.
Understood, and thanks for the clarification. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. State's Attorney Bates, I want to transition a little bit to human trafficking cases. In year-to-date 24, and I'm sorry, in 2024 and year-to-date 2025, how many human trafficking cases have been formally prosecuted by your office?
Have Jesse Halverson, the head of my SVU unit, come.
Good evening, I'm Jesse Halverson. I'm the division chief of our special victims unit, which houses all the things you would expect to be in a special victims unit, including human trafficking. We've had probably two cases that would be what the city, what the members of this committee would think of as human trafficking, where there is a facilitator that people would call a pimp or a trafficker and one or more people engaged in sex work for money, right? And I think that's when people talk about human trafficking or sex work, that's what they're talking about. I personally have been to four or five community meetings in the last, I would say, 12 months from every district in the city or corners of the city. And when people are, what I go to, the meetings I go to, where people use very blunt language about what's happening, what they're really talking about is street level prostitution and sex work. And, you know, the word human trafficking is a big word. And I'm part of the, you know, our office participates in Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. We have not missed any meetings for the law enforcement subcommittee. We are very engaged. So in terms of what's brought to us that's prosecutable as human trafficking at the felony level, right? There have been basically two prosecutions with those charges. But we're also engaged in other sex work problem cases. We just recently litigated a rape case where the victim worked at a exotic dance club.
Yeah, and I appreciate that response. I want to kind of bring us back to focus a little bit. So, you know, totally understand the definition of human trafficking, but you mentioned two within the calendar year 2024, 2025, is that correct?
Yes, I think one finished and, yeah, I think one is finished and one is almost finished.
Okay.
But there's also, I'm sorry.
That seems a little low compared to like other jurisdictions. Do we know what that number is compared to other surrounding jurisdictions?
What I would say is, you know, it's been asked these questions in different forms previously. I think other counties count things a little differently. The other thing that we are engaged in that we have stood up since last year, and there'll be a familiar name attached to it, which is Patricia Deros, is that we are beginning to build out a program to address the street level sex work, which is often very closely involved and almost hard to differentiate from some of those open air drug corners, right? They're usually together. And the goal when we came in, you know, me as the division chief of the special victims unit, Mr. Bates is the state's attorney, was to not revictimize some very traumatized people who are the victims of the human trafficking, who are the sex workers, right? When we talk about trafficking, the people being trafficked are the sex workers. From the community's point of view, they are the visible face of it and they are the target of the community's concern. I went to a meeting, a Northwest Commander's meeting, and there, the captain there said, "We no longer go to the corner and say, 'Everybody here is getting locked up.'" Right? She was explaining that to the community that that is not modern policing, right? We're not just going to go and arrest people without knowing what happened. So if you want to make arrests for that, you actually have to put people undercover, just like for a drug deal. You know, we don't, you can't use ring doorbell. You have to have an officer, a sworn officer as part of that prosecution. So there is, there are mechanisms being used to go in. There have been some arrests at the street level with subsequent discoveries of guns and drugs that were prosecutable. But there's also a diversion court that has been stood up now and is functioning. And there is the beginning of a working partnership with the Baltimore City And there is the beginning of a working partnership with the Baltimore City Police Department and a service agency. I think it's turnaround, I'll let Ms. Deros talk to it more. But the idea is, the, you know, if it was a simple problem, right, we all would have solved it by now, a lot of people working on it. So the people who are engaged in the sex work, right, men, women, others, the, their problems are very complex. And arresting them and having them spend a night in jail is not going to stop them from coming back in a day or two, right? They need what they need. They need housing, they need money for drugs, they need money for food, there is survival sex, there is so much to that. So one of the things that the district court program is aimed at is figuring out how to solve the problem. Because that is a problem that you can't just arrest your way out of.
Sure, sure.
So I'm going to defer to Ms. Deros, but I think that's.
And I think that's an appropriate answer. Madam Chair, I'd like to commit, formal committee request, please. If we can get the labor hours for that particular unit, for that, for those two cases that you mentioned, the labor hours that you all did as a unit? And then also the number of cases that were transitioned to the diversion court that you mentioned?
Sure. And just, just for clarity, the cases that are in the district court never came, sorry, never came up to felony for review, right?
No, understood. But the two that you mentioned, if we can get an assessment of how many labor hours?
Sure.
Yep. And then also secondarily, you mentioned the reliance on the diversion court. I would like to know how many of those cases are coming to the diversion court from your, your office?
I don't know if that, that is available, but I could defer to Ms. Deros's work on that, I just want that as a follow-up.
Yes, please, we can do that as a follow-up.
Okay, great, thanks.
Ms. Deros, I believe, has that information.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Let's give him 30 days. Yep.
Good evening again, Patricia Deros. Yes, I wear many hats.
I know, we need to get you a working printer.
In March of 2025, we partnered with the Baltimore City Police Department as well as our Adult Recovery Court, formerly known as Drug Court. That is now called Adult Recovery Corp. because we're taking cases other than just substance abuse. We are also doing a DUI component in that courtroom. We began doing a prostitution diversion program where we're working with the Baltimore City Police, that if they do initiatives and they come across an individual that they believe could be charged with the crime of prostitution, they run a records check on those individuals. And if they have nothing else, no open warrants, they take them to a safe place and they keep them there. Another officer will go to a court commissioner and go get a charging document and serve them. And at the same time, Project Turnaround will come in and the police department's victim services will come in and begin offering services and trauma, drug assessments and trying to get them into treatment. They are placed on the docket the next Thursday, which every Thursday afternoon is the prostitution diversion. During that, we have a judge, we have a, someone from Baltimore Health who provides a drug placement. We have a court drug assessor who gives them an assessment. We have a case manager who does what's called a RANT, which is an evaluation to determine what they need, whether it's mental health, substance abuse, or trauma. And then we begin the treatment process. If they agree to perform all of these things, in about six months, if they're successful, their cases will be dismissed.
Thank you so much. Do you have a number?
We have one person so far who's entered the program and they've failed to appear, they've absconded. We've had four who we've offered the program to, who were not interested, they would rather be prosecuted, do their three days in jail and be done with us. So we're offering the services to those who want it. We can't, they're all voluntary programs, so we can't make them do it. But we have the services and the ability to get them off the street if they're interested in doing so.
Thank you so much for that explanation. So just to confirm, four persons have gone to that, four persons have gone to that court in the calendar year 2024 through 2025?
Four were not interested, two we dismissed because they were victims of human trafficking. And once we have certified that they are truly victims, if we're not, we can't prosecute them. We have others that were supposed to come in, but they never made it to the docket. They failed to appear between the date that they got their charging document and then Thursday that they were supposed to come. So within that one week, they, Thursday, they never showed up for court.
Okay, thank you so much. And it's a little late, if you can confirm that, that number again, please? No, what is the number again?
What's the number?
Yeah.
One entered the program, one had a bench warrant before they entered, two were dismissed for human trafficking for further investigation, and four not interested. So one of our difficulties so far has been that when they've been encountered on the streets, many of them have open warrants for other cases.
Okay.
And because they have open warrants, they're being taken to central booking.
Okay.
And being processed.
Okay.
We're still in the process of determining and, or they have cases in other jurisdictions, which kind of prohibits us from diverting them into ours. If they go to a trial court and all of those other issues are resolved, the prosecutors in the trial courts are eligible to send them back to the diversion court if the individual wants the treatment and services.
Okay, thank you so much. And for the previous committee requests, if we can have 30 days? Thank you.
And just, this prostitution diversion program, it just started in March of this year, of this year. Yeah, just March of this year. So it's just a couple of months, but we'll get you that information.
Colleagues, do we have any additional questions? Okay, counsel, Councilman Gray?
So I heard a lot about the deficits in your office, that your office is facing, State's Attorney Bates. However, your office is operating with a $2 million surplus this year. Can you explain the request for additional funding? And also, did you reach out to Governor Moore directly regarding the need for funding for this unit or anyone at the state level, especially since this was funded by the state, especially given the tremendous deficit that we're all facing, city and state alike?
Now, I definitely understand. You know, one of the things that our office continues to do, I'm a real big believer, if we're going to be stewards of the public's money, I do everything I can and we try to do everything we can not to ever have a deficit. Because you never know when a rainy day is going to happen. And just so, the deficit that we see now isn't, I mean, the money that we, you see now isn't the money we have. And part of it is, because what people haven't realized is that we had a cyber attack. But that cyber attack was our rainy day. With that rainy day, we had to spend almost $900,000 to be able to, to not only defend it, but to now put in place, without asking anyone else for money, to put in place a firewall that, you know, some of it came from a grant and some of it came from general funds. So that was one of the reasons we try to always operate in terms of having money, but also in terms of how we handle our pins. One of the things, we have different levels of pins. So we have a number of pins for senior attorneys that we have the money there, and so it looks like we have more money. We have pins for, for some of the lower level prosecutors that are funded at a higher level, but we're not starting a low, brand new prosecutor at a higher level. So it looks like we have a little bit more money than what we really have. And the other thing that's important for us, we didn't have a rhyme or reason how people received raises in our office when we got in office. So we had to reconfigure everything. So now we have a step increases in our office. For instance, if you're a district court prosecutor, you go from district court down to circuit court, you're on misdemeanor jury trial, that could be a $5,000 raise. If you now are doing homicides, you're going to get a $100,000 paycheck. And so we try to go ahead and have the money prepared, put money put to the side for those types of raises as well. Then the other thing we kind of noticed was that we had a number of prosecutors that left our office that were making higher six-figure, and then they left. So when we put all that together, we recognize that's how we had so much of a surplus. I, once again, I'm very serious, I don't like to have or have a deficit. You know, I don't ever want to come before the city council begging for money because we didn't manage our money properly. And so that's important. Now, in reference to the other part of the question, Governor Moore's team funded us at a body worn camera division for two years. Also, their surplus, their issues, and they didn't have the money. We've spoken to them to say, to try to figure out what's going on with GoCap. I do believe, you know, try to get whatever we can here, we'll continue to talk to Governor Moore and his team. But you know, one of the things also my team pointed out, because we're asking the money for the body worn camera division, we just, and they just pointed out to me, it's not only Baltimore City Police Department, now the University of Maryland Baltimore County, I mean Baltimore, UMBC, MDTA, Hopkins, Sheriff's Department, Amtrax, MTA, Capitol Police, everybody now has body worn camera. And so I understand how when you, on paper, it looks like we have this surplus, but I understand that we always will try to operate with a surplus because once again, you never know that rainy day and that rainy day did happen. We had some grants that we reached out in terms of technology that, that softened the blow of some of these issues for us. We continue to reach out for grants to do whatever we can. But also that surplus isn't exactly what it looks like. We feel that we've tried to do everything to be the best public stewards of the money that belongs to the citizens and the residents as much as possible. And we will continue to do that.
Right. And so you, you did reach out to Governor Moore to, to ask for the funding or?
Well, we reached out to GoCap and GoCap, at this moment in time, that was a one-time ARPA money and it, and it ended. And so we'd have to try to find out a special way to try to do that. You know, we're trying to find the money however we can.
I, I definitely appreciate that answer and, you know, I'm no law enforcement person, so, but I, I don't know, maybe I would suggest you and the mayor can work together and make a plea to the governor to see if we can find that, if it's an issue for the city fiscally. So, thank you.
Thank you.
State's Attorney Bates, thank you. Thank you to your entire team for being here this evening. We are going to recess for our last hearing.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and for the entire council.